He must have to do that at his meetings, don't he? Tim? He must have to do that at his meetings, don't he?
It's all good.
Got an awful lot of papers on the table there.
Called order, the city council meeting for the city of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, March 16th, 2021 is now five o'clock. Would City Clerk please call a rule?
Here, Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Rehappel.
Here.
Council members, Valerio Better.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
President.
Ryan Larson.
Here.
Does term. Coram, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an open forum, not turning from members of the public to address city council and items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff, boards, and commissions for research and future council agendas if appropriate. We have Mr. Mark Holy here with us today. Let's talk to us and introduce himself. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Holy.
Right, thank you. Mark Holy, newly elected county commissioner, and I apologize I didn't get here sooner, but just the way timing and so forth and so on worked here. But represent District Five, which is the, if you would, the northwest corner of the county and kind of the northwest corner of East Grand Forks also. And just wanted to introduce myself and anything that's pressing at the city level that involves a county, vice versa, pick up the phone, give me a holler. And there, I know there's a couple of issues that maybe get a little interesting here as we go forward, but we'll deal with them as we go forward. So my phone numbers haven't changed since when I was on the city council, so that's how you get ahold of me. And I think even my email address is the same as it was before. So just get ahold of me and we'll work through it. And just wanted to stop and say hi and introduce myself. So appreciate getting on the quick agenda. So that's it. Thank you.
Mark, a lot of us have worked with you in the past, and we know that you are really good at keeping your word and following through on things. So thanks for showing up. And we'll look forward to working with you with the county.
Appreciate it. Thanks. One of the things, the recent round of PPP money that went out, everything go okay at the city level here? Okay, good.
Thanks for passing that through.
So that was, that was a lot of work there, but well, your people did all the work and so forth and so on. So we're glad that that got through the process fine. So.
Turns out it's not easy to give away money.
No.
And to do it right.
And to do it right. It's always easy to get free money, but to do it right is where the hiccup is. So good, glad that's gone through okay. So, so other than that, I'm done. So thank you.
Congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
Haven't had a chance to see you, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Move on to approval in minutes. Consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting for East Grand Forks, Minnesota Council for March 2nd, 2021.
Move.
By Rehappel.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any questions or discussion? I see none. Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Rehappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Schedule of bid lettings, there's none. Schedule of public hearings, there's none. Consent agenda, items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. Whoever council members may request individual items to be polled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Anyone like items polled from the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion. Or do you summon one when polled?
I want to poll one.
Which one do you want polled?
Number four.
Take a motion of two through three then for consent agenda?
I'll move.
By Johnson?
Second.
Second by Vetter. Any questions or discussion on two or three? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Rehappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number four, consider proving a feasibility study agreement between the city of East Grand Forks and Convergent Nonprofit Solutions for the completion of the feasibility study regarding planned fundraising campaign for park and recreation facility improvements. Is there a motion?
Move.
By Rehappel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Mr. Helms?
The only reason I had it polled is because I don't think that I'm ready to vote yes on this project yet because I'm not so sure. I guess I don't feel I have enough information to vote for it. That's the only reason I polled it. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just not ready to vote for it. So thank you.
I think it's the right thing we're doing. We're moving in the right direction. We're gathering information the right way, and I think we need to move this thing on and keep moving. So any other discussion? If not, we'll take roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
No.
Rehappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledged or received reports of officers and boards and commissions for their meetings of Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission for February 17th, 2021. Regular meetings of Park and Recreation from January 20th, 2021. Regular meetings of Library Board from June 20th to January of 2021. Communication, there's none. Old business, there's none. New business, consider proving the request to start the internal hiring process for an assistant fire chief.
Move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Rehappel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Rehappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider proving the request to start internal hiring process for an engineer.
Move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Rehappel. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Rehappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider proving the request to start the internal hiring process for a firefighter.
Move.
By Demers. Second by Rehappel. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Rehappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider proving the variances to the access management map to add a new driveway accesses at South Point and Central Middle School.
Move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Rehappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider proving the final replat of lots four, five, and six on Block One, River U 10th addition with requirement of digital files submitted to the planning office.
Move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Rehappel. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Rehappel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Consider preliminary approval of the McBrotter Acres addition with requirements of the submissions of covenants for staff review, provide intentions for the installation of utilities, roads, and development agreements, and include language regarding how the developer would pay for the street reconstruction if there's an issue with the force main that crosses 13th Street southeast.
Move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Rehappel. Any questions or discussion?
Council President?
Yes.
I'd like to just briefly give you a heads up on where we are in this process. At this point in time, we've reviewed the plat, looked for any utility easements that are needed. A couple of things that, if you recall from the last plat review back in 2018, they do have some swales and different types of depressions that they're using for stormwater, and so we need to make sure that those are maintained. At one point in time, they were between property lines. Now those individual swales and depressions are on within a property. So they're on the private property part of it. So where we are right now is to review the covenants for one, just to make sure that they meet the minimum city requirements. Anything above and beyond then in the covenants would be up to them to enforce. So the city kind of wants to remain out of those covenants, but make sure that, again, they meet our requirements. The second item would be the development agreement. This will be the first time we'll have a developer install the utilities, roads, those types of things. So we have to, we're in the process of meeting with the engineer and the developer to go over what our standards are for roads and then go through the discussion in regards to what type of utilities, when and how they'll be installed, costs, those types of things. And that meeting will take place tomorrow. And I think as part of that, we will review just what's going on with the force main that's under 13th. But because the force main that's going under 13th is, you know, their private line that connects, I, we feel that it isn't something that we would need in terms of language or something specific in a contract to address. If there were issues and they needed to tear up the road or they had problems, they would be responsible for paying for it. So that's kind of where we are in the process. So we're just waiting to get through that development agreement and have that come back to you with some of the things that are placed in that. And again, just if there's any small changes to the plat. So does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one. Just looking at the Lot Two utility easement, just wondering why it kind of cuts across that property at just a straight angle and doesn't follow the angle or follow the curve of, you know, that C5, C7 curve of the property line. It seems like it's just a giant chunk of easement.
And I guess that would be a good question for water and light, possibly Keith Mitchell stuff, but I think that's, running curved lines, I think, would be a little bit difficult. So I think.
Well, I mean, you do it on Lot Three and Lot Four. You run a curved easement line. Like I said, it just seems like it's kind of cut in the corner. And I mean, not that that's a tiny lot by any means, but it just, it seems like it's an odd thing. And I was just wondering if there was a reason for that.
Fine. Go ahead, Keith.
Yeah, no, I, I don't see the drawing that you're looking at, Council Member Demers, but I know we wanted to keep our lines as short as we could, especially the water line. But we can sure, look at it again and see if there's something that can be changed.
And like I said, it shouldn't, I mean, it's a four acre lot. It shouldn't be too bad. I just was wondering if there was a purpose for why we're cutting the corner there.
I think part of the purpose, if I recall now, was that the utility easements were taken back in 2018. The property lines were in a different location. They have since moved those property lines so that the swales are inside, like I said, again, each individual property. And they left the utility easements as is from the past one. So, I mean, we could certainly adjust them, but the developer was the one that presented this to us and, and we have, you know, we'll take as much easement as they're going to give us, I guess.
Right. I guess I wouldn't have a problem with shrinking it, but like I said, it's, if they're fine with it, it's fine. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Nancy? I see none. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 14, consider authorizing a city administrative clerk treasurer to issue payment of recommended bills and payroll.
Move.
Move by Johnson. Second. Second by Vetter. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Holstead?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Reapel?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander.
Just a few things. Number one, some of you know that we're continuing to work behind the scenes on revising our LGA formula to make sure that we don't continue to go down, down, down each year, working with the folks from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and I think they're going to be very helpful also to coordinate drafting the language of a bill. Representative Keel, Senator Mark Johnson will all be on board in helping to bring that forward, as will other members of the House and the Senate, and we appreciate all the effort that's going into that. They tried a few different twists and turns, but they didn't achieve the result that we'd hoped for, and, and now they've come up with one that's a little more straightforward and should be somewhat promising. Number two, working also a little quietly behind the scenes, I don't know if they've made a final determination about whether the PPP loans given to businesses will be taxed as earnings, and those are forgivable loans from the federal government. The federal government has already decided not to consider those to be taxable, and the state was making that determination, and we're trying to get involved and make sure that that, really, is the right thing not to tax those. It really was supposed to be a stimulus to business to help them keep their people on the payroll and to cover some of their overhead during the pandemic and to turn around and tax that would just be wrong, and we'll make sure, best we can, you know, whatever influence we have, to see that that doesn't happen. Third and finally, I got word that one of our residents is hitting 100 years old, Margaret Brockie, living through the pandemic and Lord knows, 99 more years of who knows what. I've known her for a long time. I haven't known her for 100 years, pretty close though, but I've known her for a very long time. She's a sweet, sweet lady and tough as they get. You don't, you have to be tough to make it to 100 years old, and so happy 100th birthday to Margaret Brockie, this amazing milestone. On behalf of everyone in the city of East Grand Forks and this entire region, thank you for the love, the caring, and the wisdom that you've shared with family, friends, and our community generously every day for 100 years. Thanks again. Happy birthday, Margaret. Coming up in about a week. Thanks.
Mr. Vetter.
Thank you. Two items. It's come to my attention that there's a hot mixed asphalt plant going in over by the Mallory Bridge, and I understand that's outside of city limits, but we do have prevailing winds, and anyone that is concerned about that, please get ahold of your council members and/or county commissioners and voice your concerns about the placement of that hot mixed plant. Second, with the governor's relaxing of restrictions, I think that government buildings can be open, so I would encourage that the city hall be unlocked and that our employees come back to city hall and work out of city hall and be open to the public again. Thank you.
Mr. Helms.
Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Reapel.
Nothing.
Mr. Johnson.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Mr. Demers.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Larson.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Murphy, I know you're going to address the governor's recent orders are relaxing of.
Yes, yep, and thank you, Council Member Vetter, for bringing that up. Yeah, that is something that the governor did bring forward in his orders, I believe it was either Monday or Friday of last, this last week, and it is, it does ease up the restrictions on the work from home. It says that work from home will be strongly recommended for those who can, but it is not a requirement. But that particular order takes place, starts effective April 15th, so the plan for now is we will be opening up city hall, reopening on April 15th when that relaxation order kicks in for that, that aspect of it. And between now and then, I will be working with the department heads to make sure that opening and transition is smooth as possible and we get the information out to the public that we will be reopening. So it's very exciting news. I think it's finally one step to going back to, back to normal and business as usual, so very excited about that, so thank you.
Mr. Golstead.
Nothing at this time unless somebody has anything for me.
Mr. Emery.
I have nothing tonight unless anybody has a questions for me.
Anything else from the department heads? See none. Entertain a motion adjourned.
Move.
Move by Vetter. Second by Reapel. All in favor, say aye. All right, aye. Opposed? Motion is carried, means adjourned.
Okay. Well, I ask you guys, I think, so the strategic planning session will be starting up here right after the meeting. We will take a short break because we will be going on to a new Zoom meeting for that, because I know several of the department heads will not be required to attend that, but some of the ones that will be presenting tonight are remote, so we'll get that one started, so.
Just do five minutes, David.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Do you know is that a temporary asphalt plant or a permanent install?
It's a 10-year permit.
10-year permit, okay.
I don't know that they would use it for the whole 10 years. Well, Highway Two is getting rebuilt from Fisher into Town, so I'm assuming that that's what they're using it for, but I haven't dug into it all.
Younger guy, I know the smell well.
It's going to be a hot job, too.
It's very hot, yeah. I moved to Denver, it was my internships and colleges. I see what you're made out of first. It was good.
Yeah.
On I-25.[1702.13]